All right. Good evening, everybody. So I just want to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Skylar Miller. I'm with Sycamore Township. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator here. Before we get too far into this, I kind of want to explain the purpose of the open house process for Sycamore Township. This is actually a pre-meeting of sorts with the public. When we have a developer that wants to come in and they're proposing any type of zone change, they are required to, and facilitated by the township, they're required to hold an open house to share with the community what their plans are for that property. This is actually pre-application. The developer that I'll introduce shortly has not actually turned in any applications yet. This is not a zoning commission hearing. This is not a board of trustees meeting. So there's not going to be any official action taken tonight. Potentially, in the near future, the developer will have the opportunity to apply and begin that process. But it has not started yet. This is really the prerequisite for that. So the idea here is, again, the developer has an opportunity to present what they plan to do at the site. And it's an opportunity for those in attendance to ask questions. Whether you are for or against the case at this point, this really is probably is not the best forum for that. We have about an hour to go through this material. I understand that there's going to be strong feelings one way or the other on this case. You can certainly forward those to me. As a matter of fact, if you don't have my email already, I want you to write this down. Contact me at smiller@sycamortownship.org. And it's also on the township website. I will certainly, up until the end of the day, 11:59 tonight, any emails that are sent to me in regards to the presentation tonight, I will collect those as part of the case tonight, or the, excuse me, the open house. And those will be passed on to the developer so that they can review those in preparation for their application if they choose to move forward. Typically, we do open houses live and in person. Under Ohio's COVID-19 precautions, we chose to do this in a Zoom meeting format. I realize this isn't ideal. So, you know, we're going to try and make the best of it tonight. So, again, it's one of the reasons I'm trying to stretch out and give additional opportunity for comment tonight. If you have any concerns, you can, again, there's multiple points down the road that you'll have opportunity to speak and give your opinion. But for tonight, I think we should all listen and ask questions so that we can all be better informed. Okay? With that, I'm actually going to turn this over to Jason Wisnewski from Grand Communities, which is also a part of Fisher Homes. So he can introduce his team and talk about the proposal. After that, we'll break and we'll try and we'll probably meander through this a little bit, but we're going to try and break and give people opportunity for questions. All right? So Jason, you want to take it off?
I will, and I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. I have to say, this is a little strange, just talking to a screen, but we'll do our best here. So thank you, Skylar. As Skylar said, my name is Jason Wisnewski. I'm the Vice President of Planning and Zoning for Grand Communities, which is Fisher Homes affiliated land development company. I'm joined by Michael Cady and Gemma Maxwell, as well with Fisher Homes. So they'll be here to help answer some questions as well. So I'll try to, share my screen here. And hopefully, can everybody see the? Skylar, is that showing up? Open House Hill Point?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Okay. So I'm just going to, I have a brief presentation here. Should take about maybe 10 minutes. Just kind of give an overview and then really want to open it up to discussion and question. But, again, the community that we're proposing is called Hill Point. And before I kind of get into the details of that, I'd just like everybody to know a little bit more about Fisher Homes. So obviously, we're Cincinnati-based company. We were founded in 1980 by Henry Fisher. So we're celebrating our 40th anniversary here this year. And we're privately owned. We're not a public company. So we tend to look at things a little bit differently than some of the larger builders out there. But our goal is to deliver the best total new home solution. And when I say total, it's not just, it's everything from the sites to the architecture, to the orientation of buildings, the character of the community that we are trying to create, and the integration of all of those things. And we have a wonderful architecture team here that is continually looking at new designs to stay current with modern aesthetics, what people are looking for when they go in to see new homes. But also what the market wants in terms of livability, functional space inside the home, how they're living their day-to-day inside of those homes. So Fisher really seeks out high-quality homes in quality locations. And obviously, we believe Sycamore Township is about as high as it gets for the Cincinnati area. So it's a wonderful location. I encourage you to look at some of our, or all of our communities. You could go to fisherhomes.com, take a look at every community that we have available. But if you wanted to see something that was close, that's a little bit more local, I tried to pick a couple there. Kensington, which is just off of Fields Road in Deerfield Township, and then Water Crescent Land, which is also in Deerfield Township, off of Socialville Foster Road, kind of over by King's Island. So a couple approximate locations for us. But with that, just that kind of brief history, I'll talk about the site itself. We're looking at a roughly two-and-a-half-acre site. Montgomery Road is right here. The site is just underneath this star. It's a wooded, single-family home right now. This, I lost my thing. This building right here is the Mercedes-Benz dealer. This is, oh my gosh, the name flew out of my head. Montgomery Point Plaza, I believe. And then again, just north, if you go just north of the site on Montgomery Road, you'll run into All Saints and Muller High School. So Kenwood Town Center is just off the screen down to the kind of bottom left-hand corner. Just some inspirational imagery for what Hill Point is. This is kind of a new endeavor for Fisher Homes. This is more of what we would call infill product, going into more established communities, but doing so in a way that is a little more modern. Really trying to use the location and the community as the amenity, as opposed to a suburban location where you're kind of creating all this stuff from scratch. We're not trying to reinvent this area. We're just trying to integrate into it in a manner that meets what the market demand is. So like I said before, it's about two-and-a-half acres. Again, just for an orientation perspective, this is the Mercedes-Benz dealer here. Montgomery Point Plaza here. So it's about two-and-a-half acres. We're looking at 22 sites. We have a combination of 10 front-entry townhomes and 12 rear-entry townhomes, or townhouses. So the front-entry townhouses are here. You can see we have one main street that comes in off of Montgomery Road. The front-entry townhouses would be on the north side of that road. And then the rear-entry townhouses would be on the south side of that road. Come into the main community, obviously, between these two buildings would be an alley. And this serves as your alley access to the rear entry townhomes. To give you an idea of what these buildings are proposed to look like, we have some renderings drawn. So this is the six-unit front-entry townhome. Again, a mix of diversity of architecture from the standpoint of materials, articulation, bringing some of the building facades out to create some interest. But paying some respects to the history of the area with the materials and colors, but also trying to do that in a more modern way, in a more modern flavor that is what the market is desiring, or today's market is desiring. There's a six-unit configuration of the front entry. There's also a four-unit configuration. And again, it's very similar with brick articulation in the facade, different materials for that structure. On the other side of the street, again, on the south side of the street, we'll have the rear-entry townhomes. These look like a two-story two-story structure from the street. But that alley goes down, and there's another level that you can't see that would essentially be buried, you know, below grade on the street side. But you would access that lower level, that two-car garage from the lower level, from the alley behind it. And once again, just looking at the complementary architecture, as I mentioned before. Just a simple, kind of modern, understated entry monument out on Montgomery Road, just with the name of the community, and then some landscaping as well. Something that's a little more understated. So as I mentioned, kind of our vision here is a mix of front and rear-entry townhomes. The front entry are just over 2,000 square feet, you know, kind of like a base at 2,000 square feet. The rear entry are just about 1,900 square feet base plan. They are both three stories with two-car garages, integral garages into that. And again, from the streetscape, though, the front entry, you'll see the three stories. But the rear entry will look like two stories. And typically, our target market here is young professionals, empty nesters. Again, young professionals looking for a good location that has quick access not only to, you know, 71 or potential job opportunities in the area, but also, you know, get to Kenwood Town Center quickly, get to the restaurants, get to the shopping, that kind of thing. And again, that's also the appeal for the empty nesters. Some, a little bit of kind of a rendering of what the interior of these can look like or could look like. Expand out. So just again, to see a more modern flavor, a more modern design going into these interiors. But high-end finishes, high-quality materials, both outside and inside the proposed units. Next steps, and I know Skylar was kind enough to go through all this, but really what we're looking to do tonight is establish and maintain a dialogue with stakeholders, hear what everyone has to say, see what we can incorporate in terms of feedback into our plans. But no decisions tonight. This is just, like I said, it's a chance for us to build a rapport. Eventually, assuming we, you know, get the application submitted and move on, we would present our plans to the zoning commission. The zoning commission would be a recommendation only. That's not, they're not the deciding, up or down, they're not the deciding factor on it. Once we would go to the township zoning commission, we would then go in front of the township trustees at some point, hopefully. And that would be where approval or denial would occur. So with that, I'll kind of wrap up here and just want to say thank, want to thank everybody for their time and consideration. We're really excited about this opportunity. Again, Sycamore Township is a great, a great location. We're really excited about this new kind of product line, this townhouse product line that we're offering, and really look forward to seeing this, hearing some feedback, and then seeing if we can get this to fruition eventually. So with that, I'll just kind of leave this plan on the right-hand side again, just so it's up here, and then the sample elevations of both the front entry and the rear entry. And with that, Skylar, I guess what I would do is, at this point, I'd love to open it up for questions or comments. Hopefully, we've at least answered some of the questions. But unless you have something else, Skylar, that's what I'd like to do at this point.
No, I think that's perfect timing, and I appreciate the summary page. I was trying to decide which slide to have you leave up. So it's really not a clean way to do this, everybody. So I, I'm just going to kind of go down the list of participants. And basically, I'll ask to unmute you. You will, you'll then have to unmute yourself once you have that clearance. And, you know, just, by all means, try and understand that, you know, we do have a limited amount of time here. But I do want you to be able to ask pertinent questions. Let's try not to go over the same questions if they've already been answered. And again, I know folks may have strong opinions, one way or the other, about this. There's going to be plenty of opportunity to discuss that. Okay? All right. So with that being said, I'm going to start with Britt Everly. There you go.
I guess today, are you wanting us to simply listen and then just ask about the design? Or where are we going with this? Because I do have a lot of concerns with the information that was gathered, but I don't, you've said a couple of times not to speak about issues. It's more about questions.
So if you have a concern, say, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, parking on the internal streets or something like that. By all means, please voice your concerns and give the folks from Grand Communities an opportunity to speak on that. I just don't want, or hope we don't spend a lot of time on, you know, forgive the term speeches, if we will, you know, saying that you're adamantly against this or positively for it, and, you know, not leaving opportunity for dialogue. So I just want to keep, I just want to keep the dialogue moving, if that's fair to say.
Okay. Well, I guess one thing to start out with is everything kept talking about how Fisher Homes is wanting to integrate these 22 townhomes into this community, wanting it to not truly be something that's going to catch your eye when you're driving by and make it fit into the community. However, I guess I struggle with that because these are 22 homes that you're fitting into two-and-a-half acres, I think you said. So my struggle with that is how is the aesthetics going to fit into this community? I hear you saying you want it to be modern, but if you drive any of these streets, you'll see that this is a community that's full of grass. Everybody has a lot of acreage or a lot of land. They have a lot of trees. And all I can hear is that this is going to cut down on that greenery and that acreage that everybody has. It's going to cut into people's property. It's going to add 22 homes. So if you give each home at least just two people living there, that's 44 more cars on our street. I'm sure you see our students that are at Muller, where we have lots of kids that are coming and going. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to drive during that time on Montgomery Road. But I guess I just don't see how 22 townhomes is going to fit into this community. And my question for you then would be, what makes you think 22 townhomes is going to fit into this community? And how, without interrupting the community as it is today, without changing it?
Well, I guess what I would, how I would answer that is that it isn't, we are changing the community. There is going to be change because, again, how we see it is this, if you look at the current use, it's not necessarily viable as a single-family home. Is commercial or office or something like that the most viable, highest and best use of that site? Not necessarily, especially given all that's going on with, you know, the pandemic and retail in general at this point in time. So it is changed, and I won't deny that. What I guess the question is, and the question will be eventually to the township, what is the right kind of change? And we can debate whether this is the right kind of change or the wrong kind of change. But I don't think what we're saying is that we're not going to change the community. It is changing, and we're trying to find, I think we found a way here. These are high-quality, high-value homes that
High value? I apologize. I'll let you finish.
That use the site, that find the highest and best use of the site in today's environment. And, again, we can debate what all, you know, it doesn't integrate, it does integrate. What we're coming forward with or what we're proposing is something that we believe checks all of those boxes, but does so in a way that is moving and looking forward towards what, you know, where things are headed in today's environment.
If I could just have a quick follow-up, I won't waste anybody's time with all of this. But I guess my quick follow-up to that would be, one, you said that it's not viable for a single-family community or for a business. And who's, what investigation have you guys done into that? And like, what made you determine that it's not valuable? Is this your own personal opinion? Or is this some information that you've gathered that we haven't been privy to, to know that it's not useful for either of those? Secondly, I'm not sure what the pandemic, if you could clarify how that affects this land. And then additionally, you keep talking about how these are going to be high-value homes. What do you expect the value of each one of these homes to be compared to the homes that we've purchased in this community? Because that is incredibly concerning for people who have invested into the homes in this community. You keep using the phrase "high value", but I don't understand maybe what the value of a townhome is compared to the homes in the community. So I guess that's a three-point, the single-family and the retail, how the pandemic has played a part in this, and then the high-value homes.
Do you want to take the value part of it, Gemma?
Yeah, sure. So this is Gemma Maxwell with Fisher Homes. I'm land acquisition manager and more on the homebuilding side of the business. And I can speak to the product itself. So our estimate for base pricing on these homes will be, you know, we're estimating they're going to hit initially around $450,000. And then with the different upgrades, people may like to do upgrading finishes, finishing out some unfinished space, different things, choices that they have within the homes. We estimate the final sales prices of the homes to be well over $500,000. This is an upscale product for us. You know, it is, you know, higher prices, higher finishes, higher-level finishes on the interiors. So that kind of reflects in that price and the product that we're putting out there in this new infill product.
Okay. And what townhome communities has Fisher Homes completed that would be where you're basing your numbers off of this for?
We're basing this off of similar product in the area, and then just the cost of development and the cost of the materials for the homes. So it's more of a not basing it, you know, directly off of what we think they should be. It's, you know, basing it off of the materials and the cost at hand of the development to get to that number. And that's a rough estimate net, you know, with our assumptions in place now. But that's roughly where we believe it will land.
Okay. So then, the other two points there, the one about the pandemic is, I guess what I was trying to say there is brick-and-mortar retail was struggling pre-pandemic and is struggling more post, or currently in pandemic. So when you, Montgomery Road being, you're going to be hard-pressed. We are seeing a downturn, I guess, in retail, very similar to what is just in the south and west of us. It's difficult, it's a difficult environment now. Building more of it later, or building more of it anytime soon, has not been, or we do not see being a viable option just based on the people that we are talking to, the brokers, the landowners that are out in the markets today. So I guess what I was saying about the pandemic is that new retail space, given that people don't, you know, go to restaurants and necessarily sit at 50% capacity. Now, will that last forever? No, but who knows how long it will last. But the demand for that kind of use along Montgomery Road is declining rather than increasing. And again, that's based on professional opinion, what we're hearing from market analysts, market data, other brokers and property owners out there.
Okay. I don't want to take up everybody's time, so I'll move on. Like, I'll just let other people move on. But I guess the only follow-up with that I'll just have is, I don't think the pandemic has killed everybody's love for having trees in our neighborhood as well. So, again, I think I've gotten a little bit of information on where, why this is here. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Britt. We'll move on. All right. Next on the list is Joe Wordeman. And if I mispronounce somebody's name, I apologize. There we go.
You are okay. Sorry, I'm trying to get my screen going here. So I actually grew up in the property line with the proposed development. And so I have several questions, as well as multiple, multiple concerns that Brittany already talked a little bit about. The first question that I'd come up with is, what is the approximate square footage of each one of these units?
They will range, so our rear-entry townhomes start at about just under 1,900 square feet. But there's options to finish out some additional space. And then the front-entry townhomes on the top there start at about 20,040 square feet.
2,000.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So my question is just for the value, and I understand new homes and new builds and all those things. The values you're proposing, you can buy a home and land surrounding neighborhoods for this equivalent price. So you guys, going to be, but the going rate for something that you can't tear down is roughly what you're talking about with half-acre to full-acre lots, wooded area, all that. It's not a new build, but the new builds are going for millions by the time they're all said and built. I definitely encourage you guys to understand what the homes in the area are selling for. You may already know that they're, you know, they're, to go a little bit back, yeah, brick-and-mortar retail is not doing well. But the residential real estate markets is hot as it's ever been. And also, brick-and-mortar retail is not the only business option. There's four plots of land, fairly equivalent, I know a little bit smaller, that have come up with great, low-profile viable options that operate during business hours only. You know, offer that type of, I'd say, sort of synergy with the community that says, hey, most of us are at work. It doesn't create noise at night. There's not a lot of lights. There's not dumpsters. There's not, you know, there's been a lot of zoning laws that have ended up with, you know, green spaces and all these other things. And that kind of goes into my next point, which is, how exactly do you guys propose to build that retaining wall that close to my property line without actually affecting my property? Because several of the builds, actually, that didn't get nearly that close have had some negative impact on the structures, or sorry, the land in the back of some of the homes already. And that's very concerning to me. And also, I'll just point out that the closest location of that is, I believe, less than 90 feet from my dwelling. Not my backyard, not my deck that I'm sitting on now, 90 feet from my dwelling. That is very, very concerning to me. So, you know, the questions in that is sort of, why do you believe that brick-and-mortar is the only retail that you're competing against when no retail has gone into any of the other spaces out there? Why do you believe that the value is going to go for what it is when you could get more for equivalent value or potentially less, depending on where you're looking in the surrounding area? And just sort of more information on the retaining wall location, exactly how you would tend to accomplish that, as well as not impose on my space. Because you guys have the retaining wall drawn right between all the trees and green space, and I've seen how this stuff goes. Those are all going to go. So it's inevitable. It's construction. But taking down those trees, basically, you know, we may have a tree that splits our property. a tree that splits our property line. What happens then?
So with regards to the retaining wall, I mean, obviously, we we do not have the right to go onto your property in building that wall. And this is not the first, nor will it be the last retaining wall that grand communities builds. And again, I can assure you, I'm not saying that some of the trees won't come down, but I know what we cannot do, what I can say for certainty right now is that we will not encroach upon your property because we're not allowed to do that. But building the wall itself is, I mean, I don't necessarily know if there's anything overly complicated about it. Obviously, there will be some structural components to it, but.
It's a fairly steep grade. I mean, it's nothing crazy.
Agreed.
On that, sorry, real quick, any plans with the drainage creek that's currently there? Because that's basically, I don't know exactly within a if it's directly the line or if it splits the line or what, but depending on where it falls, you may be encroaching upon that as well, which is drainage for the neighborhood.
We the wall and the any proposed grading on the site is not impacting that existing drainage well. It does clip the northeast corner of the property. And then it goes on to, I believe, what is your property? And so it's off of off of our site at that point.
The only other follow up I forgot to ask is, I'm assuming that dumpsters will be at the end of this turnaround here by unit 22 and unit 10.
No, we intend to have trash service to the individual units since every homeowner would have a garage. So there would not be a dumpster located as a part of the community.
What what's the purpose for the concrete or blacktop there?
Just an emergency access turnaround point for vehicles.
I'll, I'll, I'll let let others go. I'm sure they're they're going to hit on some of the other things that I would touch on. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next up is going to be, let's see, Mr. Paul Delaney. And I guess on deck will be, I don't know if it's Mr. Or Mrs. Strickland. So but Paul, go ahead. If I can get it to unmute.
I'm actually having a little bit of challenge with my tech. I'm trying to log on both my phone and on the computer. So if I may, could I get to the back of the line?
Yeah, that's fine. You can do that.
Sorry, but I don't know if you guys are hearing me, but I just want to get more secure connection when I weigh in.
That's fine. We can.
We can hear you clearly.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right. So Mr. Or Mrs. Strickland, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to you.
She has to unmute.
All righty. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I live, oh, no, sorry. It's Christine Strickland. I live back behind All Saints. So my top concern is obviously the traffic because it's already difficult to get in and out of our neighborhood. We have one way in, one way out. This is going to add to Britt's point, at least 44 more cars. And if they're young professionals, they're going to be driving during the rush hour. I'm concerned that this will now have a bus stop along the bus route. There could be more lights coming up now because of increased traffic. We're gonna, I mean, at least for me, I'm going to make sure that the township knows that we'll need more lights along Glenover Montgomery Road. To Joe's point, the properties around us are being sold at amazing rates, amazing prices. I honestly don't think that you're going to sell 22 units at between 450 and 500,000. I don't see it because we already have a ton of apartments going next to the Jewish hospital being built. There's going to be more in downtown Montgomery. There's townhomes directly across from this proposed site that's next to Mercedes dealership. I just don't see why we need additional townhomes. And now that they're going to be three stories, are we going to see their lights? Are there going to be streetlights? I'm just, and then you get to add the added flash of Indian Hill Schools. So since my kids are in the school, that's an influx of children. So those are my concerns.
All right. Jason or Gemma, do you guys want to take a moment to address this?
Skylar? I don't know. I don't know if you, I can barely hear you now.
Hear me now?
There you go.
All right. All right. Do you guys want to take an opportunity to to address some of those concerns?
I guess the one concern that, you know, from a from a traffic standpoint, we have engaged with, we have a traffic engineer, we have engaged with ODOT, who, you know, Montgomery Road is a is a is controlled by the state, is controlled by ODOT. So we are working with them and and basically we'll meet whatever improvements or regulations they would like us to meet. But we have not been asked, or this development does not warrant a traffic study. We can get into some of the finer points about what traffic studies do and do not do. Ms. Strickland mentioned more signals. Again, that's up to ODOT, that is up to the municipalities. And this development in and of itself will not generate enough traffic to move that needle in one direction or the other. And that's not me saying that. That's just, that's by what traffic engineering standards are. And again, ODOT has already seen this. We've produced some documents for them in terms of asking them what they would like us to do or not do. And they've verified that it just doesn't generate enough traffic to warrant further study. So I'm trying to think if there was something else there that that I.
One other thing, so especially in regards to the to the front entry garage model, what what's the what's the typical height to peak for these units?
Like, what's this? Like, what's from here? Like, from here to the top of this gable is what?
I don't know off the top of my head.
We'll have to get, I think we'll have to get back to you on that one, Skylar. I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Yeah. You know, questions are going to be raised tonight. We may not get all of the answers, but these are certainly things that can be addressed as it. Okay. Let's see here. I'm going to go ahead and move on because we are, we've got about 20 minutes left and we've got quite a few people to still move through. So Mr. John Shoney?
And am I muted or unmuted?
We can hear you now.
Can you see me?
Yes, sir.
That's best, that's the best part. I'm John Shoney, and I live with my wife, Ann, across the creek. And when I saw this, I, you know, my, I have a number of concerns and one of them being, you know, it's a three story building. How high is it from the compared to what's there now, the single family? You know, you're going from one family to 22 units. It's it's really packing a lot of living into that small space. There's a lot of older trees there that, you know, you show some trees there around the retaining wall, but I know that the trees that you put in there won't be the 30 and 40 foot. And, you know, you talk about a commitment to the community. I mean, these are like transient condos. I don't know what they're going to bring to the community, and it's not consistent with what's been built along that strip to date. They, you know, like for Baird Court, if you were going to do condos, there's only five units up there in a in a very similar sized lot. I think it seems to me that it is a development opportunity to generate, you know, $11 million out of a $600,000 purchase. It just doesn't bring anything to the table. You know, if we had a low profile commercial property that was originally approved in 2008 up by Montgomery with the businesses up there, but you're taking these buildings and packing it to the very edge of the property lines to my property lines that we're going to have to look at. We live in a single family home. My neighbors are single family, not 22 unit apartments or townhouses or whatever word du jour. So that's all I have. Thank you.
So just one thing I want to be clear about here is that these are for sale. They are not apartments. These are not rental units. They are for sale housing.
Is there anything protecting people from doing that, from buying and then renting?
The one thing that you have to be careful about there is if we Fisher Homes may sell it to a buyer that, for whatever reason, might need to rent it, they get transferred or whatever else. So the one thing that we have to be careful about is fair housing laws. And we will, we must operate within the Fair Housing Act. So I guess that's where we can't prevent somebody from buying it and then turning around and renting it for whatever reason.
So the fact that you guys sell them has no guarantee to the community?
No, we've been asked that in other locations and have been told by our legal counsel that we cannot because it would violate fair housing laws.
And to be fair, no, no builder can, even in.
I understand that nobody, other people don't put 22 units on a single family home zone, so.
Okay. Again, I want to keep this moving. I'm going to ask that we that we stick to questions. This is fact finding. I realize there are strong opinions. There will be opportunities in the future to share those if this moves forward. Okay. So next up is Ms. Karen Meyer. Meyer?
Meyer is the last name. Yes. I don't have any questions. I only have an opinion, and my opinion matches those that we've already heard. So I will reserve this until a later period of time when I can express my dissatisfaction with the density of the development. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next is going to be MJ Klinefelder. MJ?
Hello. First off, I think it's important to say thank you, Skylar. Thank you, Fisher Homes, for giving us some of this information tonight. I think the first, I've got three questions. The first one to start with is all three of you with Fisher Homes, have you been to this site of development?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm happy to hear it. So each of you know how, what the terrain is like, what the ravine is like, what the creek is like, you know, how beautiful the nature is, the 100 year old trees, et cetera, et cetera. And that unfortunately, a developer would have to plow through a lot of that to put 22 townhomes on the side, I assume.
We will have to remove some trees. Yes. We are aware of that.
Okay. Well, I'll move on to my next question because I already echo a lot of the thoughts and feelings of a lot of the people on the call. By the way, the reason why I'm on this call is, and I was happy to hear Christine, as well as a few other folks, mention All Saints. I have six kids, four of which are currently enrolled at All Saints. And that's already a little bit of a dangerous stretch of Montgomery Road. So I'm very concerned of what the the traffic will do. I'm also a small business owner just down the road in Sycamore Township. So that's another reason for being on the call. I I talk to people about money all day. That's the profession that I'm in. So I guess just to cut to the chase and to be blunt, what is the break even for Fisher Homes? If we have this, to put it in other words, if we have this conversation and you listen to feedback and come up with a smaller proposal, what is the break even number of units for you?
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm a little surprised by that because as very experienced developers, I'm sure somebody at your company is very well aware of the answer to that, but we'll debate that another time. And then I guess just the third question I have for you is, and I'm so happy to hear other folks on the call echo your earlier comments about how important the feedback of the community is. So I guess my question to you is, if you receive just overwhelming feedback from the community in a negative fashion, will you listen to that and change your plans or do something different altogether? What's what's the backup plan or plan B?
Well, I think we have to, we, what we have to do is take the feedback. And I know that, so tonight, again, it's a fact finding mission. And you know, I hear clearly, I've heard that this is too much, too dense, too many. So but I, what I haven't heard is what someone thinks the appropriate number might be. And then it just becomes, can we? I don't know what that, I don't know what someone might suggest that number to be, but whether we can make that work at that number or at a number that that people think is appropriate or reasonable, then we can, then we can start to have that conversation. I can tell you this much, it is, without giving or knowing an exact number, it is closer to 22 than it is to six or, you know, even half that. I mean, it becomes inviable or unviable at that point. So I guess it's a matter of eventually figuring out what what, if it's too dense, what is, what, what does the community think is reasonable? And we can evaluate it from that point.
Jason, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut this off just a little bit. So and and I didn't clarify this at the beginning. So if we could, I realize those, those are very, those are very good thorough questions. I think the time that we have left tonight is going to be better served by actually talking about or asking questions pertinent to the layout, the site design. I'm not going to expect a private company to to share their business model publicly like this, you know, ahead of sales. But I certainly understand the question and where it's coming from. So, sir, do you have, do you have any, any additional questions before we move on?
That's all. Thank you for listening, and I'll defer the rest of my comments until another time.
All right. Thank you, sir. And let's see. I'll move on to Elaine Gillespie. Elaine, you're on, but I can't hear you. Rob, is she coming in?
Joe's talking, but I don't hear her.
Okay. Elaine, so she she wrote on the chat. My audio isn't working, but I have no questions. So thank you, Elaine. We'll move on. And I tell you what, if, I'm going to go back to Mr. Paul Delaney. There is a chat box that's at the bottom of your screen. Uh, there is a chat box, uh, that's at the bottom of your screen. Uh, I realize not everyone is going to have additional questions. Uh, so if you do have questions, go ahead and just, ju-just get in the queue there. You don't have to write it all out. Um, but, uh, go ahead and just type in that chat box that, that you would like, you would like some time. Uh, that way I just don't go down this, this list. Uh, on top of that, my list keeps moving, so it's a, it's a literal moving target. So, uh, so Mr. Delaney, if you wanna go ahead and speak?
Thank you, Skylar. Uh, apologies on the tech issues earlier. So forgive me if I'm not that familiar with Fisher Homes and the business and this model, but begging the question, with the reference earlier to the idea that, you know, brick and mortar's under duress or through COVID is not doing well. I continue to look at Montgomery Exchange and the investment, the, the construction that goes in there. Um, and then, you know, right across the street with Mercedes-Benz dealership and the investment those recently made there and, and updated that business base. I wonder, was there consideration around the idea of turning this into a, a, a business in the traditional sense of the word and the idea of acknowledging that, that with the rezoning of this space, considering it going from instead just a family or single-family home to a sort of multipurpose, uh, family and instead going to a business? Was there consideration around that idea and, and leveraging the space to continue to bring business and potentially jobs and, and other investment into our opportu, uh, into our community versus just the idea of cramming a bunch of homes into this space?
Fisher, we, I mean, we're residential home builder. We're, we don't do commercial or office or, I mean, we, we wouldn't build that. So to answer your question, I think, as honestly I can, no, because that's not what we do or what we build.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate that, cause I wasn't familiar if you, if you guys had additional, you know, ventures within Fisher Homes. So, thank you. Was there consideration around the idea of building out what I've seen in a lot of communities around Madeira and elsewhere near, nearby and, and, you know, the idea of building, you know, multi-unit or if you will, break, subdividing the, the, the area into smaller but, but single-family homes? Was that part of the consideration that you guys looked at for this area?
We have looked at that, but, um, there are some, I mean, it really just comes down to, it, it really is a property owner and, and their value and, um, maximizing it for them. This is single-family. Can, can you build single-family back there? Sure, yes, you can. Does that maximize their value? No. Or does that meet their value desires for the property? No.
Sure. So, you know, as, as a fellow business owner, I'll recognize the consideration around the idea of maximizing value, um, while at the same moment acknowledging and appreciating the fact that you guys are trying to acknowledge the community impact here and solicited input from all of us. So please understand that while that might be the stance that you take, it stands at odds with where we want, what we may want or what we hope for, for our community. So maximizing your profit is understood and it's, it's recognized, but, you know, please recognize also that, um, shoving 22 homes inside of what is currently one home is, may, may very well stand at odds with what we hope, what we hope for, for our community. So with that, I'll defer, um, and I'll pass along to the next person.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next is going to be Mr. Paul Wordeman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Um, I lived directly behind that for the last 35 years. And my first question is, does Fisher Homes own this piece of property now?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I kinda suspected as much, um, and, and nothing, none of this will be disrespectful, but, you know, over the last 25 or 30 years has been referenced by other people. The four adjacent lots, a- as well as this lot, we've been through at least a half a dozen proposals and they're, they're kind of always like this, which is, you know, it's a little bit of a 10 pounds in a five-pound bag and doesn't really fit. And first of all, I reject the notion that this is, uh, not a viable single-family home. It's well off Montgomery Road, desirable area, desirable schools. Um, you need no, look no further than the corner of Glenover and Montgomery where they're much closer to the street and they've just put in about six, six, $700,000 home. So it's got plenty of land to, for the existing structure or for another structure. And I think you referenced that, that it's really about their desires to maximize how much they can get for their property. And I don't, I don't disagree that they wanna do that, but that's what was happening with the other four adjacent properties too. And fortunately the township listened to us and said, "That doesn't fit with the land use plan. It doesn't fit with, with home rule and it doesn't fit with the neighborhood." And so everyone had to settle on what turns out to be pretty nice, low-profile, small businesses. I, I accept what you say about retail. I wouldn't be building retail either, but it could be single-family residential. It could potentially be dual-family residential. It could potentially be like the other four adjacent properties, a low-profile home business type of environment. But I think it's obvious for, for anybody that looks at this that it's, it's much too dense. It's creating a lot of lighting issues, noise issues. God forbid 40 more people trying to enter and exit Montgomery Road. If they ever do get the retail back at the old Willie's location, that was a nightmare to begin with. So if that ever comes back in addition to this, you, you're gonna have accidents and traffic jams like you can't believe. So I know that a lot of that's commentary and I have no disrespect for what you're trying to put up here, but it's, it's way too much on way too small plot of land and it's, it's solely for the beneficiary of the owners of that property and then potentially the developers, but it, it certainly doesn't benefit the community.
Okay, um, I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a, a response to that, but we certainly respect the statements, sir. Um, let's see, the only other question or the only request for a, a question at this time was, uh, from, uh, Mrs. Meyer, Ms. Meyer. So I'm gonna put you back on, uh, follow-up questions. These may be more for me.
So the question was, uh, is there a requirement of, uh, size of land for single use, uh, for a single home? Uh, within the township area or, you know, currently, does there exist, uh, uh, a land requirement for a single-use home and is there a, a requirement for the size of land needed for multi-unit, um, housing?
So the short answer to this is that, uh, single-family home, uh, the, the lot ranges anywhere from, uh, 6,000 square feet to one acre minimums, depending on what zoning district you're in.
What zoning district are we in?
Uh, I'm not sure where you're at and I don't...
I'm in Concord Hill Circle, right behind the property in question.
That's about the, the property in question, though. What is...
Yeah, it's not really the property in question. Uh, so I, you know, without, um, and I do apologize. I'm, I'm sitting at, uh, I'm sitting at a remote desk. I don't, I don't really have my, uh, my land use map or zoning map with me right now. Um, with that being said, you're, you're probably in the, in the, uh, the A or B district, which, uh, is probably somewhere eight to 10,000 or 10,500, uh, if I had to guess. Um, but I can certainly look that up for you. Uh, as far as the, uh, as far as the question with multi-family, it's not so much an area requirement as it is, uh, a density, uh, requirements based on, based on number of units. So let me pull this up here.
Hey, Skylar. Sorry, I, I do have one question on, what exactly would the zoning be for this, uh, should this get approved? Cause I know that, that people mentioned that they have certain thing and then they had to fight a bunch of other things, cause that plan fell through. So I, I'm just kinda curious. Should this end up going through? What, what would this, what is the zoning proposal?
Sure, and that's something else we can talk about briefly. Um, so the, the application, if this moves forward is, is kind of, uh, um, there's, there's two parts that they're, that are gonna move forward concurrently. One is gonna be the zone change to D, multi-family. Uh, but because of the density, um, the, the applicant would be required to submit a, a PUD-1 plan. Uh, there's, there's two different levels for our PUD based on density. This would be considered moderate density, uh, not, not high-density, actually. Uh, so, uh, the, the zone change has to start here with, with the, uh, the public open house. Uh, then the zoning commission would hear, uh, the request for zone change. Uh, they would review that concurrently with the PUD-1 plan. Okay? The PUD-1 plan only requires approval from zoning commission. So potentially, uh, if we're talking about just straight approvals, uh, the zoning commission could approve the PUD-1 plan and make a rec, uh, well, they would have to do it conditioned on, um, you know, successful, um, approval of the, of the zone change or, you know, a successful process there. Uh, but aside from that condition, they could approve the PUD-1 plan or make landscaping conditions set, you know, whatever reasonable conditions they, they may see. Uh, the recommendation for the zone change would then go forward to the Board of Trustees, who would hold a public hearing, uh, and then make a, make a determination on that. Uh, the zone change is, uh, is the legislative, uh, part of this process, uh, and is, is subject to referendum. So after the, uh, after the zone change is potentially approved by the Board of Trustees, uh, there would be a 30-day referendum period. After that 30 days, the property is rezoned and the, uh, the new owners of the property would have, uh, full right to move forward developing, uh, consistent with the PUD-1 plan.
So the, the...
We are, one second, we are at seven o'clock, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this up. Uh, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you one second to, to do that follow-up question, but I do wanna tell everybody, if you have follow-up questions, if you have comments, please email me at smillar@sycamortownship.org. Uh, I will make, uh, your comments part of the record. I will forward those to, um, to the developer, uh, as well as keep them on file, uh, and, and review them, uh, should this go to, should this go to, towards the zone change and PUD review. And, uh, last follow-up, sir.
Yeah, sorry. So, so the, the PUD-1, um, is dependent upon the zone change, but not vice versa? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so you, you, a PUD-1 approval, um, doesn't, uh, doesn't provide any, uh, any vested right in the property unless, unless the zone change is finalized. Uh, the PUD-1 wouldn't be effective without, without the actual multi-family designation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and real quick, what is the multi-family that doesn't require a PUD-1 based on the current standings of, of Sycamore Township zoning? Should, so, so basically, should the, should the zoning get changed but the, but the PUD-1 not get approved? Uh, you, you're covering up your microphone or far away, sir?
One, one second. Okay, uh, low-density multi-family is, uh, is considered, uh, a maximum density per acre of 7.26 units. Uh, moderate density has a maximum of 9.7 units per acre and high-density is a maximum of 14.5 units per acre. Uh, I will clarify that, that, uh, with the PUD-2, uh, there, there can be allowances for even higher density than that and there is, there is higher density, um, in some areas of, of the township.
So, thank you.
All right, my pleasure. All right, guys, um, like I said, we're, we're over time. I appreciate everyone coming, um, and, you know, even though we did this virtually, I think, uh, I think we got through a lot of material. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Grand Communities and, and, uh, future, uh, excuse me, Fisher Homes, uh, for their presentation, uh, being so willing to, uh, you know, listen and answer the, the questions of, of our residents. So, all right? Great. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Thanks, Skylar.
Thank you.